I like that. Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of April 3rd at 7:05. The meeting we're not going to call to order. Our invocation will be...
Seconds.
Oh, I do apologize. April Fool's Day, late. It's the second, not the third. Our invocation will be led by... I do apologize. I haven't looked at this. I should have. Led by the Reverend Tracy C. Johnson from the Murphy Chapel Church Paul at the AME Church. Would you please come forward, sir? If everybody please rise. And then the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Tony Wu.
Let's bow our heads and pray. All wise and all-knowing Creator, we come with thanksgiving. We come with gratitude. We come with joy. We thank you for this night. We ask that you would give wisdom to the council. Open eyes and listening ears. We thank you, oh God, for the residents and this city. Look over our law enforcement as well as our civic leaders. We thank you. We give you all blessings and all praise. Amen.
Everyone, please bow my knee. Ready?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, is anything you can bring in from closed session?
I do have three items to report from closed session. The first relates to the conference with real property negotiators. The property at the former Chamber of Commerce building at the corner of Sunset and Cameron at 811 South Sunset Avenue. City Council gave direction to lease that out or attempt to lease that out to the public. The second item that I do have to report is that conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. The agenda lists that there were two items under discussion. We only spoke about one of them. And the third item is that we added as a subsequent need item to the agenda. As authorized by the Brown Act, there was a 5-0 vote to add a discussion of the interim city manager because there was an item... Because we needed to add that. Because there was additional information that we needed to discuss that came out between the time the agenda was posted and this meeting. I have nothing further to report.
Thank you. Ms. Assistant City Manager, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I thank you. At this time, we do have a couple of presentations to make. Tonight, we're going to honor the National Telecommunicators Week is April 14th, April 20th. Can I please call forward the Police Chief Mark Taylor and Dispatch Manager Kim West and all the other dispatchers here tonight? Please come forward.
They're a little bit shy, but they're coming. Okay, maybe not shy at all, but... Well, good evening to everybody. As the mayor said, this year, we're going to be celebrating National Telecommunicators Week, and it runs from April 14th through April 20th. And this is the time of the year where you really get to recognize the hard work, the dedication of all of our dispatchers. I think most people know our dispatchers probably work even harder than most surrounding cities because we're one of the few agencies that dispatch both police and fire calls. So they're almost double busy. They really do a great job. And before I give the microphone to our dispatch manager, Kim West, I'm going to talk a little bit about Judy Turner. And Judy started with us in 1992. In 2017, she was promoted to senior operator. And last week, she was selected by our staff as the Dispatcher of the Year for 2018. So if you could please give her a hand.[328.12][328.12](APPLAUSE). Judy is a little shy, but would you like to say something?
It's an honor to be recognized as Dispatcher of the Year in this matter, but I truly believe that all of our amazing dispatchers are just as deserving.
Thank you. So now I'm going to turn over to Kim West, and she's going to tell you a little bit about our dispatch center.
Hello, everyone. First, let me thank the council for recognizing our dispatchers and dispatcher week that's coming up in a couple of weeks. We're super busy in our dispatch center, and like most dispatch centers across the country, we're very understaffed right now. So these girls, this is basically half our staff right here coming tonight, and they came from their days off, which is awesome that they came out. West Covina does police and fire, as the chief said. Last year, we handled about 100,000 calls coming in for just everyday police and fire situations, and about 34,000 more were 911 calls. In addition to that, we made over 50,000 calls out last year. So you can imagine how busy it is when you have three people working in there handling a structured fire while sending rescues to our residents and doing police business. It's a busy, busy place. Somehow, these girls just make it happen every day. They stay positive. They treat the public great, and they're just super with each other, and I couldn't be more proud. This past year, we had some challenges. We had a new radio system come in, so that was lots of fun for everybody. And then on top of that, we had a new phone system come in, which I was just talking to Roberta somewhere, and she's still feeling the pains of that even as a resident. And on top of that, we have techs 911. So technology and just so many changes always come in their way, but they do it with a smile and continue to do just a great job. I couldn't be more proud of our center. But thank you for all being here tonight. Appreciate it.[438.19][438.19](APPLAUSE).
All right. From myself as the mayor and the rest of my fellow council members, first of all, we want to thank you so very, very much for the hard work you guys do. You know, a lot of it sometimes is a thankless job. You talk to different people in emergency, they don't know what they're doing, and a lot of times, you guys have to walk them, talk them through it. And we appreciate everything that you guys do for us. So I have a proclamation here, but it says, "We ask, we ask, we ask, we ask." I could keep going, but I'm not going to do all that. What is the proclamation? It says, "National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is from April 14th to April 20th," and it's from the West Covina City Council. And I want to thank you ladies for everything that you do for us. Can we get around and get a picture with all you guys? And our next one is, in honor of the Donate Life California Month, can I please call forward the City Ambassador Daniel Levanoz to come forward, please? To receive the following proclamation. We have a proclamation here for you, sir?
Thank you.
And then I want you to say something afterwards because what you do is so very, very important on it. And it's been my honor for the last three years to be there with you. And what is, it's a proclamation that says, "The DMV Donate Life California Month from April 2019." And this is presented to you, sir, from the West Covina City Council and the City of West Covina.
Thank you very much.
And would you like to say something? For those who don't know what you do, please explain it to them.
Sure. My name is Daniel Levanoz, and I am the City Ambassador for one legacy organization. The proclamation tonight is for the DMV Donate Life Month campaign. April is donor awareness month. If you have a pink dot on your driver's license, thank you very much for registering for organ donation. The DMV, believe it or not, it registers 92% of our organ donors, future donors, and together with the DMV, we have registered over 15 million future donors. Unfortunately, we only have... We have 22,000 people waiting on the waitlist in the state of California alone and 114,000 nationally. So it's very important. Also, a highlight of the event for the month is our 17th Annual Donate Life Run Walk, which is at the campus of Cal State University Fullerton, April 27, 2019. Come on out. We usually have about over 12,000 participants out there with donor family members walking for their loved ones, recipients like myself, walking for our donor families. And we have... It's a family festival, so everybody's welcome. And thank you, Mayor, for coming out for the last few years and representing the City of West Covina at our Rose Decaduation for every... The last few years. And thank you, West Covina council members, the staff, and the community for recognizing organ donation as it is. Thank you very much.[642.04][642.04](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir. Let's get... Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Assistant City Manager to have something to say, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, community members, and staff. I wanted to announce there's been some miscommunication and some confusion over the Athens Annual Cleanup Day. I am happy to announce that this year, we are going to be doing the Annual Cleanup Day in the month of August. So in addition to that, we have been promoting something that's really beneficial for residents, which is the oversized or bulky item pickup, which actually takes place five days a week, 52 weeks a year. So please call ahead and schedule those. Unlimited amount of pickups, but that's in addition to the annual cleanup day that we are going to have. So again, we will be promoting this through our website, social media, and press release, and that will be in the month of August. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now it's time for oral communication. All those originally speak. Either if you haven't filled out a yellow card, please fill out one, and give it to our Assistant City Clerk, and she'll call you up and order.
At this time, I'd like to call forward Erb Redholtz, Stefani Broviak, and Eric Reese, if you can line up. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow residents. Couple things. First off, I would like to thank you, Mayor Johnson, for picking up on my suggestion to seriously take a look at allowing billboard advertising on the very busy 10 freeway corridor that runs through West Covina. That is a way to generate some income into our general fund without going into the pockets of the taxpayer. So I look forward to that moving down the line, and hopefully, support for that is there, and that can be enacted down the line. Also, one other thing. We have... All of us received recently the new Discover West Covina magazine, which is vastly improved over what it used to be. It's got a lot of information in it. It's very well presented, very colorful, very slick, and it's all good. I do have a suggestion, a feature that I would like to see added to it. And I'm using as an example the newsletter magazine that the City of Brea sends out to its residents and businesses. They have a feature which they call City Recap. In our Discover, there are several pages that are tabbed "City News," but there's very little actual city news on those pages. What they do here is provide a recap, a review of city council action on ordinances, hearings, and contracts that have occurred between the publications. Because as we all know, not that many people attend council meetings, not that many people watch the council meetings, but the Discover West Covina goes to every single household in the city. And I think that in the interest of, well, transparency and providing information to the residents, this is a very simple, easy way to let people know what's going on in the city. This talks about street sweeping enforcement and changes in zoning map boundaries and appointments to various committees, and it's things that are on record here in the city, and I don't think it would be, you know, too much to add a very simple... I'll leave it with the city clerk. I'll give it to you, actually. And I was looking at that the other day, and I think we should have that to give more information to the residents. So I would like to see some action on that, just to provide more information. That's what we're all about, right? Informing the citizens. And you never know what's going to trigger a resident to get involved. They might see something there that is occurring in their street or their neighborhood that they want to be heard on, and they just may start to show up. And I think we need to have more citizen involvement. Makes for a better-run city. So I appreciate your time on that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Broviak. I know that you've already made a decision, but what I wanted to do regarding the Bowman Park Shelter is outline services that residents will be losing by your change to Inland Valley. Like, for example, twice a month, the Bowman Park Shelter offers low-cost vaccination and microchip clinics, $15 for a microchip as opposed to $50 if you take your animal to a vet. They also... ASPCA is on-site. They offer low-to-no-cost spay-neuter. They also, if somebody is financially strapped, they have vouchers they can give you to take your pet to the vet. We have people that are in a situation like, for example, one lady, her husband had a heart attack, cannot work. The ASPCA, they come by, you know, she comes by once a month. They provide food for the pet for the month. And if you have people that become displaced and lose their home, the shelter will board the animal free of charge for 30 days as long as it's shown that you're actively looking for somewhere to stay. And in some cases, like one lady, it was extended an additional three weeks. I remember hugging her and crying with her when she got to come in, you know, and take her cats because she finally found a place. So there's different services available. I worry about response time from, you know, say, the Pomona area. What if you have what we call a PDD, a potentially dangerous dog situation? How long is it going to take a driver to get from over there, you know, to over here? I mean, I do understand response times can be a little slower, but there's drivers in the field. Certain calls are priority. They can get here, you know, a lot quicker. The hours, the shelter is open until 7 o'clock four days a week. Three days a week, it's open until 5:00. They only close county holidays, so it's more accessible for people, you know, to come, anything like that. But there are services the residents will be losing. I did call Inland Valley outlining some of the services that are offered, and I was told we do not offer any services like that. People are pretty much going to be on their own. So I just want... I mean, I realize you've made your decision, but I wanted to just outline services that your residents of West Covina will be losing by not, you know, going to Bowman Park, you know, the vaccinations and things like that. So I just wanted a chance to, you know, speak out on that because it's going to affect a lot, a lot of residents. Some don't drive. How are they going to get there? What about senior citizens who don't do freeways? And if the shelter closes at 5:30, what if they can't get there in time? You know, there's different factors, you know, that weigh in. So I just, you know, I just wanted a chance to outline services that are going to be lost for everybody. Thank you.
After our next speaker, Eric Reese, I would like to call forward John Shoemaker, followed by Bill Robinson, and lastly, Jim Grivitch.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. So hello, my name is Eric Reese, and my public comment for future city council and staff analysis/consideration is on a proposal to improve safety for schoolchildren and to reduce congestion for motorists passing West Covina High School at the intersection of Lark Allen Avenue and Cameron Avenue. My proposal would be to consider implementing a left-turn signal for traffic turning left onto Lark Allen Avenue from Cameron, an extension of the left-turn lanes, and to consolidate the pedestrian crossing signals so that all pedestrians cross at the same time, similar to how a diagonal pedestrian crossing occurs. The reason I bring these items up is because with the current situation, multiple hazards exist. The first hazard is vehicles turning left onto Lark Allen Avenue often encounter a blind spot with opposing traffic due to the opposing left-turn vehicles blocking the visibility of opposing traffic going straight. Another hazard is schoolchildren crossing intersections when the "do not walk" symbol is either flashing or is solid. This is combined with vehicles that ignore the "no right turn" signs. These two conditions cause the right-hand lanes to back up with motorists and leads to many vehicles abruptly cutting into the left lane. All these conditions create traffic congestion, which make it hard for vehicles to turn left or for vehicles to go straight. Adding a left-turn signal would help reduce congestion by allowing multiple cars to turn left unimpeded and would eliminate head-on collisions by eliminating the need to yield to oncoming traffic. Extending the lengths of the left-turn lanes would increase queuing capacity for traffic turning left, consolidating pedestrian signals that pedestrians can cross from multiple directions at the same time. Would help significantly in improving safety for schoolchildren by making them more visible to the motorists. When all pedestrians cross at the same time, motorists are held back by red lights in all directions. Coupling this with a "no turn on red" sign would help eliminate its incidences with motorists striking pedestrians as motorists turning right or left would not have to worry about yielding to pedestrians when making their turns. This would also help in dramatically cutting traffic congestion when school lets out for the day by allowing motorists to turn right without having pedestrians impede their way. As for funding sources, the city could try applying for state, local, and federal grants through programs like SB 1 and LA Metro's Transportation Sales Tax, which allocates return money for cities to help in reducing congestion. In conclusion, I would highly encourage the city to look this proposal over as it would help cut congestion on Cameron, would help in eliminating traffic incidents and pedestrian incidents, would save the city money over the long term and preventable litigation from incidents, and would allow the city to reinstate the ability for motorists to turn right during times when schoolchildren head to school and are let out of school. Thank you for your time.
A few items. Thanks for bringing back the... I know a lot of people would be happy about the Cleanup Saturdays, but you know what I'd like just one time? Somebody go, you know, instead of saying there was a misunderstanding, just to say, you know, "We messed up. We fixed it." You know, or "It's just fixed." Because when you say there's a misunderstanding, it means that the half a dozen people who called City Hall in Athens completely misunderstood the word "canceled." You know, it's just easy. We brought it back. Don't have to say anything else. It's just really, you know, irritating. The other thing that I'd like to bring up, and, you know, this is what completely terrifies me, that our financial staff, who have continually had different leaders come in all the time... How many have we had? Like, five in three years? Stated over and over again for months that we were going to spend $69 million last year. We spent 63. Congratulations, we spent 63. That's good. The problem is, how can you be that far off? I mean, it's real easy to figure out. You add up all the invoices that came in, and you get a total. I mean, you don't need any magic system. You don't need anything along those lines. You know, I've worked at multi-billion-dollar corporations that weren't $6 off, let alone $6 million. You know, it's something that's really simple to do. And it's even more simple if, at the end of every month, you come up with a financial statement that says, "This is how much we brought in, this is how much we spent." And at some point, you kind of go, "Something's wrong here. This isn't making sense." You know, so I hope as you continue to make the changes that you're making in the city, that, you know, the people that come in are people that you can rely upon and trust for basic information like that. I mean, that's just inexcusable. You run a business, you know, how far off are you monthly on how much you spent? You know, you run a recreation, a big recreation center that has a lot of money running through it. I don't think you're very far off each month, if at all. You have your own business. You know, I don't know how big it is, but I bet you in proportion, well, you're not 10% off ever. You know? You were at a school district for 13 years. I don't think they were $6 million off in total in 13 years when it came to their expenses. So, you know, it's going to be amazing when you finally do get some, you know, people in who really do things at how great the city will continue to be, and even more so. The services that you'll be able to supply and, you know, really benefit the people. One thing about signs or billboards, I just want to quote the mayor who, from time to time, says, "We don't want to be like other cities." And I think things like billboards keeps us from being just like other cities. You know, so I hope when and if that comes about, that the lure of a few dollars isn't sufficient to take away from what has always been nice about West Covina, that at least there was a part of the city freeway you could drive through without, you know, 1,000 billboards blocking views or distracting you or whatever the case may be. So hopefully, we'll stick with those things, you know, because after all, West Covina doesn't want to be like everybody else. So, thank you.
Good evening, council. Bill Robinson, resident. This policy body seems to be careening from one unusual decision to another. I'll give three examples. Building a big hotel atop a toxic pile was unusual. I attended two community top-deck meetings, and no one stood up to say, to do a hotel. A host of other good ideas were presented at these meetings, and I hope the council will adopt one of, or several of, a host of ideas that were presented at those community meetings. The firing of the city manager by a 4-1 vote before his contract expired seems unusual, and it puzzles me. It's unclear, from reading the press, why he was fired. That's why I don't subscribe to a newspaper, and, you know, it's just fluff. And, you know, it seems like a basic question to, if you fire a city manager, to know why. And I'd like to know why. The newspaper doesn't give that. And I thought he was doing at least an average job, which is not surprising, given the almost impossible circumstances the city faces. Maybe he was the designated scapegoat. And nobody blames you folks for most of the problems the city faces. You guys are all newbies, and most of those problems, all of those problems, were created by poor decision-making on previous city councils. You're not guilty so far, in my mind. And that brings me to Agenda Item Number Three. In preference to what you're proposing on that ordinance, it might make a lot of sense to just have the eight department heads report to the city council, not have a city manager. That was done many years ago, and maybe you can gain control and better guide the city if you don't have a city manager and just have the eight department heads report directly to you. Perhaps that's a better idea. I wish you folks would concentrate on bringing the budget back to a semblance of balance without imposing new taxes. Most residents of the city would be deeply grateful if you would do that. And the homeless problem has been discussed a lot lately. Yeah, I personally wish that you would follow the lead of a city like Pomona. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Just follow their lead, and it's not illegal to be poor and adopt a compassionate approach to homelessness and do what they're doing. So it's unusual for me to shut up a minute and a half ahead of time, but that's all. Thank you.
I'd like to call forward J.D.
What happened in Cole? Bressiani? Oh, there you are, Mr. Bressiani.
I'm playing two roles tonight.
Oh, you always have. You're good. I'm sorry if I misunderstood what you said, but it's not unlimited pickup when it comes to the bulky schedule, right? I thought I heard you say that, and I just want to make sure that's clear. I thought I heard you say that, and I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
I meant unlimited days in terms of the service, so it's going on for 52 weeks. Five days a week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I was hoping I can kill two birds with one stone, since we have an ex-school board member. West Covina High School is developing a solar parking lot. Is it going to be used, or can the city encourage the school board to use it as a -- for parking space? Because us residents around that area suffer a great deal of trash and cars parked out in front of our homes, because there just isn't enough parking. So is there a plan for the school board? You can, if you like. I certainly encourage you to, Mayor, with all due respect, with your approval, of course, because we don't have enough parking to accommodate all the activities between the park, the elementary, and the high school. Thank you, your mayor.
Okay. The solar panels at the northeast side?
At the northeast --
Northwest side.
-- north end, yes, ma'am.
The plan is to put a parking lot in there.
Excellent.
It's part of the process when the Performing Arts Center goes up and the CTE building. So, the corner of Fernwood and Cameron will have a new building on the corner. The Performing Arts Center will be in the middle by the tennis courts. There will be new parking lots in both places, and they will be putting in a parking lot underneath the solar panels on the north side.
I don't struggle envisioning this. In general, there's going to be far more available parking.
The short answer is, yes, there is a parking lot going in underneath the solar panels.
Excellent. My other concern as a resident in West Covina is the number of garage sale signs that are posted from Friday through the weekend and left to fall into the streets during the week, and I guess due to the reduction in the maintenance yard, we don't have anyone really going around picking those things up, so it's left for the residents. So I've kind of taken it upon myself, and I just pull them off. I figure I'll give mugshot or something because of it, but I'd rather do that than have to pick it up on Monday or just see it laying out there in the streets. So I don't know if the city can do something about that, but it's ugly, all right? So, those are the only three concerns I had. Bulky item. Hopefully additional parking space to avoid folks from parking out in front of our homes and all those signs. Some of them are real fancy, but they make a mess. Thank you for your attention.
Jim Gravich, I'm going to be speaking about the second quarter report, and this is also a continuation of my remarks last week about the annual financial report. The second quarter report, I think, represents some progress for the city. It's the first time I have seen a detailed budget adjustment document submitted to the council. I think that's a step in the right direction in keeping people informed about what's going on. Also, there's detailed projections in that document. I have concerns about whether they're accurate, but at least they're there, and that's a good thing. So the city, I believe, has started on the path to trying to provide the appropriate financial information, because if you don't have the information, you can't do anything about the problem. And I would like to focus now on the financial trends, which these documents indicate. The chart that you have on the display and also the council has in front of them talks about what's been happening the last four years. And if you look back in 1415, 1415 was a good year. It was the last good year. In that year, the actual expenditures for the city were less than the adopted budget for that year. That was the last time that happened. Since then, starting in 1516, 1617, 178, each year, the city spent significantly more in terms of millions more than what the council adopted. The way the city had been dealing with this historically is, towards the end of the year, they would submit a budget adjustment saying, "Okay, we've got to take all the money out of the reserves to cover, in effect, what amounts to an overdraft." An overdraft means you're spending more than is budgeted. That's what the word means. And the city's been doing that, year after year, the last three years, and according to the second quarter report, they're going to do it again in this fiscal year, the year we're in now. So there'd be four consecutive years of spending more than is in the adopted budget. One of the most important things the city council does is adopt a budget. It's supposed to be the plan for how the city's going to be spending its money in the future year. And yet, if in actual fact, the city ends up spending significantly more money than is budgeted, that plan is not of much value. And it's a serious problem, especially when each time, the solution to the problem is to go to the reserves to cover it. You were somewhat lucky that, as I talked about last week, that revenue last year was significantly greater than was originally budgeted, so you actually had enough money to almost cover the expenditures. It was still a million short, but it was close. It was reasonable, just because you happened to have more revenue than was projected. But I don't think that's going to happen this year. I don't think you're going to be bailed out. There is somewhat more revenue than was originally projected, but not enough to cover the expenditures. And my point is that, to me, that is the most important issue facing the city, is to get a handle and control on expenditures. And if it doesn't, there's no solution. There's only bankruptcy at the end of it. And bankruptcy means layoffs, large numbers of layoffs. That's what it means. And the -- my previous history, I worked at agencies that went bankrupt, government agencies, community colleges, because that's the systems I worked for, and it's a horrible experience. And I'm hoping that the city doesn't have to deal with that. Anyway, I feel a little bit like I'm talking about, in effect, a 12-step program. Let's talk about the city having an addiction to money, can't resist the impulse to spend it, and we're starting. We're starting in step one and two, but we've still got 10 steps to go. It's very hard to break a habit and a tradition, and there's all kinds of issues that have to be addressed to deal with it. It's not a simple thing, and I plan on talking about the various steps that need to be taken in future meetings. Thank you.
We have two Agenda Item Position slips that I'd like to read into the record. The first one is from Marcia Solario. She wishes to comment on Item 7, Approval of Financial Consultant Service Agreement. She states, "The contract is for four positions. At last audit committee, it was stated we had a full finance team with exception of Fire Department." She asks, "Can you clarify ratio of staff to consultant and explain price increase?" Number two, we have a slip from Hacienda Heights resident Joshua Sanchez. He wishes to comment on our special Agenda Item 1, Appointment of Interim City Manager. His comment is, "I cover the La Puente City Council, and they still complain about things Carney has done and how his actions have hurt the city. Ask John Solis, this move will be worse for residents than Freeland." That concludes the cards.
Thank you. Mr. Assistant City Manager, do you have any comments about anything that was said during our communication?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple comments. J.D., we can certainly take a look at the street signs, so if we can get together and talk about that. Thank you, sir. I wanted to comment on Mr. Schumaker's comments, if he's still here. I actually did speak with council before tonight's meeting, and I let them know that I am the one who's responsible for the miscommunication, as I put it. And the reason why I called it a miscommunication is because while some people were told we had canceled the event, some residents were just not told anything, which creates miscommunication. So that is my responsibility. In addition to that, the other comment that I wanted to make was in response to Ms. Broviak, and I apologize if I said your name wrong, mentioning that Inland Valley Humane Society does not offer the same services. On their website, they specifically highlight low-cost vaccination and spay-and-neuter services. They have walk-in services. As far as response times, there will be an animal control officer stationed within the city of West Covina. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Now we shall move to our calendar. I know I spoke to the council members. I know Councilmember Schumaker would like to poll Item Number One, and Mayor Pro-Tam Wu would like to poll Number Seven. And I'm not going to poll this, but with the assistance -- T. Cook, please. No, then I'm voting no on Number Three, so this one I won't have to poll. And now I can have a motion to accept the rest of the balance of the --
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro-Tam Wu. Oh, my apologies. Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passage 5-0. Now we shall move to Item Number One. That's Councilmember Schumaker.
I asked for this item to be polled. We got draft minutes, and I was hoping that we would have the final ones here tonight. There are a few errors. On the January 24th, it says, "A special meeting of West Covina City Council was called to order in the council chambers," when that meeting was in fact held at Shadow Oak as one of the BKK landfill community workshops. It also shows that Councilmember Letty Lopez-Viato was not there, and she was. On the January 30th minutes, same issue with saying it was called to order at council chambers, when that one was actually held at Cortez. I don't recall if Mayor Johnson, Councilmember Lopez-Viato, and Councilmember Castellanos missed that one also, but I thought maybe --
The League of Cities.
Oh, they were at the League of Cities, that's correct. But I just wanted to reconfirm that one. And then, I don't know if there's errors on the other ones, because I was not on the council at the time, but those are just minor things that I noticed in reviewing the agenda.
So there's a typographical errors, and I'll be happy to correct those. If you'd like to still vote on them, you can.
It's up to you guys.
I think as long as we get them corrected, and I'm okay with moving forward, and thank you for -- was that? I'll make a motion as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
You're out of time.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tam Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passage 5-0. Now the next one. The next one item was polled by Mayor Pro-Tam Wu, Number Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I need the city to explain why we need this $10,000 financial consultant, why the reason, okay, we need this budget amended.
Sure. I'm going to ask that the acting finance director, Mark Baxter, come down at this time, and I believe our account manager, Todd Owens, is coming down.
Second time. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro-Tam, council members. So what we're looking for is to extend the contract with VTD, who's supplying accounting services to finance. And there's two different areas where we're utilizing their services. The first area is the accounting training. Our accounting staff is relatively new to the city and to municipal government. We've had quite a level of turnover in accounting. The current staff, two of them have been there for less than six months, and one was promoted into a position from accountant to accountant, and that accountant position's never been filled. So we're utilizing VTD to do training and to provide services for the accounting group. The second person that we are recommending to bring on is to someone to assist us in the budget process. The budget process with the finance director leaving, there's no really trained staff that have completed a budget at all. We have need that position to help fill the gap in the background. The person we have right now from VTD is the former finance director who is assisting us in the budget process.
Okay. Could you explain to us what is your position? Because we have people come and go, and you got new character to us.
My position?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I am currently the purchasing manager for the city, and I've been with the city for three and a half years. And as of last Monday, I've also taken on the role of acting finance director to help in the transition, to try to bring everything together. So we're working on the budget and plus complete the training for our accounting team with the consultant, so that they can, we can wean ourselves off of that.
So you right now currently act as acting financial director? We have no idea about this position.
So the reason we have Mark being the acting finance director is because in the past, we have had consultants as the interim finance director. So let me make the distinction. Mark is not the interim finance director. We are currently actively seeking applications for the finance director position. He's taken on the acting role so that he can oversee the day-to-day operations and basically keep tabs on what's happening, what's going on in the office, manage employees, and then also manage what level of work is being done by the consultants, so keeping a pulse on what's going on. In the past, when we've had a consultant, they're only working part-time, which has created a little bit of chaos and trying to figure out what's going on on the day-to-day operations side. So that's why we're using, as you can believe it, a three-and-a-half-year seasoned staff member as a manager to help oversee the day-to-day operations. That's how much turnover we're seeing in the finance department.
How about the new hire, our accountant manager, right?
Yeah. Mark is the accounting -- I mean, I'm sorry, not Mark. Todd is the accounting manager. Todd comes from the private sector, so the hope was that he was coming in to be mentored by Marcy, but Marcy had only been here for a few months. So Todd is still -- Todd is a very good accountant.
So he's accountant, you're accountant, right?
Yes.
So you should -- I heard a good thing about you. I think you can handle the job. We don't have to spend $10,000 for this, for consultant. Okay, I think we hired a full-time staff, and then we should have our staff to do the job.
Yeah, as they've mentioned, my experience is not in city government, and I've never prepared a city budget before, so to lean that on me might be a bit more. That's what I'm looking to get from the consultant, is that valuable experience to build my skill set up to that level.
And in that way, I will prefer to have our interim city managers, okay, to decide what the department would become, rather than hire, okay, a consultant that we have to pay extra, or we can have somebody coming in, okay, somebody can right away doing the budget. So in that way, I won't approve this.
Is there any other comments?
If Mr. Wu would like to hear from the interim city manager, can we possibly, instead of just saying no, table this to the next agenda?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Mr. Wu would like the interim city manager to have a say in this, so I was wondering, rather than saying no, if we could table it until?
Next meeting.
Until the next meeting. I understand we're in the budget, and I do understand why we need the person, because, I mean, clearly, we don't have anybody in the finance department who is I mean, clearly, we don't have anybody in the finance department who is able to work this public sector issue, which is concerning in and of itself, but that's neither here nor there at this point. $100,000 is quite a bit. I'm not sure how long...
Hundred thousand?
Yes, it's $100,000.
Hundred thousand? Okay. Forget it. I would think about only $10,000. I hope not.
Okay. So keeping in mind, we can definitely table this for the April 16th meeting. I just verified with Mark, we have about three weeks left of money for the consultant. So if the council does not approve the item at the April... I'm just making sure that the council understands that if this item does not get approved, then whatever staff is left is what will have to handle the accounting and the budgeting on many levels. And if they were gone, we do not have enough staff.
As part of our backup, the public report, wherever it needs to be, I had asked a few meetings ago about where the staffing was in our finance department and if we needed to bring in help based on the turnover. I was also, because I'm one of the members of the audit committee, told that staffing is where it needs to be. It makes a difference when, yes, we have accountants there, but they don't necessarily have the public sector experience because thankfully, growing up with the father, I did. I do know the difference between public sector and private sector accounting. Had we known that, we could have already had him play. So I would like to know with the next agenda and this item, what is our staffing in that department? How much are we going to need the accounting firm and what we are doing to recruit for that department?
I hundred percent agree with Councilwoman Schumaker. I think we should leave the city, okay, future interim city manager to take care of this issue. Okay, he should be, okay, responsible, accountable for, okay, this, our future budget. Okay, and that's what, okay, we need this person, okay, sit in ASAP and starting work on the budget and make sure all this accounting issue can be resolved. So in that way, I support we postpone this for the, let the future interim city manager to decide.
So is that a motion?
Do I need to move to table this item?
Yes.
Yes.
We have consensus.
You have a consensus in the morning? Okay.
Let me just clarify the direction.
Sorry. Let me just clarify the direction for the April 16th meeting to bring this back. You would like to have the staffing levels of the finance department, what we are doing to recruit. And I'm sorry, was there a third?
Basically, why?
You want rationale? Okay. Perfect. I got it.
Basically, how, since it's four people, that would assume that there were down four members of staff. So are these consultants going to be doing other duties besides the budget?
Yes.
And so I think that needs to be a little bit more clear.
Will do.
Okay. That is the end of our consent calendar. Now we shall move into Department of Regular Matters and item number eight. Assistant City Manager should give this report.
Mr. Mayor, the gentleman behind me will be giving this report.
There's half a far to go.
This is the second quarter financial report for fiscal year 2018-19. The city has completed a second quarter financial report, and the attached quarterly report financial summarizes the city's overall financial position for the period of July 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018. With only 29% of the city's general revenue funds received by December 31, 2018, the general fund revenues are below budget at this time. This is expected as the city's two largest general fund revenues, sales and property taxes, are not received on a consistent basis. In fact, most property taxes revenues are received in December and April. If you look at page two, page one of the attachment, you'll see the chart there. And I'm sorry, we don't have a display this time, but you know, the third quarter will, you know, get a display up for you. The revenue year-to-date is at 28.6%, and you can see where the property tax and the sales tax are only trailing at 18.8% and 30.2%. So they're behind where other funds are, you know, revenue sources are fairly intact. As part of the second quarter review, the staff have reviewed the general fund revenues, trends, and current available information to provide a general fund revenue projections. The revised projections reflect increases and decreases of various estimated revenues with a net total reduction of $369,234. The largest decrease in estimate revenues for charges for services at $622,698. If you look at page two, there's the chart at the bottom, explains by the revenue source and the adjustments that have been analyzed. Some have increased and some decreased for a net reduction in revenues of $369 and $234. With 50% of the year completed, a review of the city's general fund expenditures by department shows that departments are on target with the projected budget projections, except for the fire department. The fire department is higher than 50% due to the budget use of overtime. This has still do with the funding of, I believe, it's station or engine number four, and also the strike team, where we're being reimbursed from the state for helping out in the fires. The overtime budgets for police and fire departments are being reviewed monthly by city staff, in which the results are being shared with city council. Staff lost prior to the update on overtime for both departments in the third quarter, but both the fire and the police department expect by the end of the year to be on budget. Lastly, the city's prepaid is unfunded pension liability to Kelpers at the beginning of the year. We estimate that we paid $9,512,268, and we saved $364,000 by prepaying. The fiscal impact on the proposal that is in front of you is the estimated revenues of $369,234, a decrease, increase in general fund expenditures by $571,000. And below, you'll see where the budget amendment is affected. The increased administration department salaries, $318,000 for the city manager separation agreement, increase in $200,000 for legal fees. City clerk department election expense was $53,000, higher than what was forecasted. The finance department professional service budget, which we just briefly talked about, $100,000. Increase in the human resources department for the interim HR director, $90,000. And a decrease in the community service, animal service expenditure revenue budget by $190,000, net zero. And that is the end of the report.
Any comments from the council?
I know you're just acting, so I don't want to give you too much trouble. So I tried to be light, okay? But I have some issue about this second quarter, okay? And I know, basically, the conclusion is win target, okay? But I think our third quarter, we might have, we fall off the cliff. We have like, why? We have about 2.1, the lawsuit, and we have $500,000. We're digging to our, okay, reserve. We pass up about a $2.5 million deficit on the third quarter. But on the second quarter, I have an issue is, okay, and we're talking about you, okay, in line of budget. And I kind of not feel to you, you're just acting, okay, I'm asking all this tough question. But again, I have to do my job, okay? So the issue would be, again, expenditure. I think we don't have, okay, basically, the income issue. Our, based on 2018, our financial report, our property tax increase, okay, rather than previous people say we are going to decrease. So we have an increase of income, and we have a sales tax, and obviously, increase, okay? Not a lot of million dollars, but close to a million dollars, so it's an increase too. So hopefully, in 2019, in these two, okay, major income, 63% of general fund, we can continue to have, okay, this increase. But the point, okay, is expenditure. That we have to control this expenditure, that overtime, okay? And I don't know, you talk about overtime monitoring, I don't think we received any, you guys received any overtime monitor monthly report? I haven't received any. Have we, have you guys provided overtime from the police and fire and in the city hall? Now we're talking about 5.0 approval left from, I think, last year, that we have to continue to monitor about overtime budget. Now we don't want to go into the deficit.
The monthly, I know for a fact, the monthly overtime projections were being provided by both chief, both chiefs.
Do you guys receive anything?
And they were, and Chris should have been emailing those out to you. So what I can tell you is that it's April 2nd today, so I should be receiving those memos from both of the chiefs, and I will forward them to you. Absolutely.
My seat, I haven't received anything, okay? Maybe I missed, so I want to make sure.
Usually, it goes out in your weekly, but I will make sure it gets to you.
Would you please? Okay, so we can see how is we control the overtime, okay, expenditure? And the salary, salary in the 2018 financial report, we increased $13 million, including salary, pension, okay, and some of the maintenance, right? Okay, so we really have to look into, based on 2018, so when we do, we are doing the 2019 budget, we base on that as our potential roadmap, how we can, okay, conserve some of the overspending and in 2019. So in that way, and I know this is basically what is already budgeted, okay, and this is already, okay, and done. But what I'm saying, on this number, I still don't see, okay, really a conservative of spending rather than still continue doing the overtime salary and all that kind of thing. So this is one of the issue, and I have. And regarding the income, regarding the license and the permit, remember last time we talking about on the 2018, the permit application, we downed 10 years low. There's a lower we ever seen. We only have a 1300 application. So how can we drop 50% even compare with a recession time? So it's a big issue for the city to look into the trouble. Is with our service planning or building department, we have an issue, or people just build, just build, okay? They just come over here to apply due to maybe our department too much of bureaucratic, okay, or not business friendly. So we have to find a way to increase, okay? This 1300 is a horrible number, a big city, 120,000 population, and we have our license permit fee dropping like that. That's a major, supposed to be not only two issue. The one issue is income to the city, the permit. Second issue, it is hazardous, okay? It's people building illegally. We have to make sure that compliance is, has to be enforced. So this couple issue, that's why maybe in the future, I don't know, you're just acting, hopefully, the city can continue to make it more precise, okay, or prediction and doing what the number is. Thank you.
If you would like me to respond to that. As far as the permits or the decline of permits, I think you'll be happy with our final report tonight in addressing online services that we hope to bring live, which we hope to add revenue to that in the future. As far as this second quarter report is concerned, the expenditures aren't all over the map, including overtime. These specific expenditures are legal services, the leave lump sum that was paid out to the city manager, the change in cost for elections. The county had given us a quote of about $100,000, 125, and it turned out to be over $200,000 for the elections. So that was an issue on the county. The city clerk's office is looking in to see if that was a rampant issue or just isolated to West Covina. And then, of course, we have professional services. So that's what the expenditures are tonight in terms of the second quarter report.
Another issue for the acting financial directors regarding, or maybe Nico too, okay, debt servicing, okay? Debt servicing is one of our major issue compared with other city. I think we have the most expensive that we might be thinking about either refi or pay or some of that debt, okay? The reason, if we continue to pay this very expensive interest rate, all this and that, let it up our revenue. So this is another issue, I think, maybe future, we have to look, okay, around, or look into it, is to make sure, okay, what we can do, consolidate, make sure we don't really waste those money. I think if we all kind of clean up all those fat, okay, we can balance the budget. We don't have to cut public safety. I think we have enough money to cover the public safety, okay, keep everybody, it's okay, in line and happy. But more important is how to make sure the expenditure is in the right way.
Is there any other comments? Yes.
We've had the discussion about the strike team for the fire department under the first report, which I wasn't on the council yet, and also this one. Do we have any idea how much we are going to get reimbursed?
If the fire chief is up there, he could come down and answer that question, because I am not sure. And to add to that, when are we going to get reimbursed?
Good evening, council, members of the council, city staff, everyone in attendance. I don't have the exact figures here with me, but I know it's over a quarter of a million dollars. There have been several strike teams that we've been a part of, and it all depends on how long we're out in deployment. So I want to say that Montesino Fire, and please don't hold me to it, but I just think we just recently got, received reimbursement for that, and it was like $80,000 just for that particular incident. So the longer we're out, the more we get reimbursed. But what sticks out to my mind right now is about a quarter million dollars of reimbursement that's out there. As far as when do we receive it, it all depends on when the state gives it back to us. So it could be anywhere from 90 to up to 180 days before we get reimbursed. But they do reimburse us for everything that we put out and a little bit over as far as the administrative funding that goes with it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion?
We see a pot.
We see. If you see a file.
There's a resolution before you. The recommendation is to receive and file and then to adopt the resolution.
Yeah. Okay.
Approve the resolution.
Okay, approve the resolution, receive and file. Okay. Do you have a, you make a motion? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viato?
Aye.
Councilmember Schumaker?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Passage five zero.
Our next item is item number nine, and this is Assistant City Manager, who shall tell us which way we're going to go on this.
I think our interim HR director is up in the stands. Oh, he's hiding right there. Martin Piniun will come and give that report.
Members of the council, this item involves the recommendation to adopt a salary resolution for the city manager that you're about to hire. We require this in order to advertise, and also we require it for you to hire the interim city manager that you're about to hire as well, to give you a guidance as to how much to pay. I put together a salary schedule for you that's the salary survey that's attached to the agenda. The salary survey gives you some guidance as to where to go in terms of the amounts that you might be willing to offer. It's something you have to decide. We can't make a recommendation, but I did go ahead and put together a salary range that you can look at, that I can give you to give you some guidance as to what to adopt. So if you take a look at the survey that we conducted, both in the 14 surrounding cities, we're towards the middle of the range in terms of what cities pay around here. And then the second grab, I compared cities that had 100,000 population or over, about 110, 100 to 110, and we're towards the bottom in that range. So given that data, I put together this range for you, a suggested range, that you can look at, beginning at 2010, I mean, 210,000 a year. I also broke it down by the month and by the hourly rate, and I took it six steps over, up to 260,000, because the conventional wisdom is that city managers last about five years, five or six years, and then they move on. five or six years, and then they move on to another city. So I gave it six steps to give you six good figures that you can work off of. It's your call what you're going to offer. This is extracted from the data where we pulled from the survey cities.
Any questions? Okay.
I'm fine with doing a range. I do not agree with this range. I mean, just off the top of my head, one, I'm fine with being in the middle of the road in terms of what we pay a city manager. Two, looking at the 13 comparable cities, we may have a population the size of Burbank, but we do not have the daily influx of people for major international corporations. Let's see, El Cajon has their own issues, we're not at all similar to them. Daly City is a major transportation hub in the Bay Area. Clovis is Clovis. And Clovis is outside of Fresno. That's why, that's why I said Clovis is Clovis. And I mean, even Compton here in Los Angeles County, we are just not similar in the issues we face and our needs. And so I think I would propose a range more in the area of 190 to 235 rather than the 210 to 260.
And I would second that, I think this is a fair offer, okay, compared with the history, okay, of our city managers from Chris Chang, 190,000, okay, and to current this and that, it's all about the same range. So, so, and I think Prisma is about 220?
212.
212, okay, that's Chris Vilen. Okay, so, so in that way, I think her range is very generous, so I would second that.
What was yours again? Sorry?
190 to 235.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion.
So if I may, so if that is going to, so my recommendation would be to revise the resolution slightly. So if you're going to be establishing a range, so I would suggest that in the section where it refers to now therefore the city council of the West City of West Covina resolves as follows, instead it would say establish an annual salary range of $190,000 to $235,000 for a permanent city manager, and then everything would follow. Second, to establish an annual salary amount for an interim city manager of, and then you would need to state a specified amount. My recommendation would be.
Motion for the interim.
Okay, so that, to establish an annual salary amount based off of, of, of two, of $212,000 for an interim city manager.
Correct.
Okay.
And I will accept that amendment to my motion.
Yeah, I second already.
And then I guess we could change the, the title of the resolution, approving an annual salary for the position of city manager and interim city manager. Fine, that, that was a yes, okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, several call please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passes five oh.
At this time, we're going to do something a little bit different, under call recess to our regular council meeting, and we're going to call the order of our special meeting. The special meeting is to discuss our interim city manager. So we're calling the special meeting to order at 8:20. And so we, I know we don't need to have a roll call because we know we're all here, so let's take that. So may I have a report from the, the city manager or the city attorney, whoever wants to, let us know what the procedure is? Oh, yes, well, I wanted to tell us what the procedure is, then we'll have a public meeting, call it to order at that.
That will be the city attorney.
Okay, city attorney, give us that, and then I'm, we're going to have to have a public meeting.
That, that's fine, so we've called the, the special meeting to order, and so now we would hear the staff report, and then after that, then we could hear any public comments, if anybody has any, and then we can introduce the candidate and you can make your determination.
Okay, thank you. We have a staff report there.
So apparently I will be giving the staff report. We, well, planned in advance, so before you this evening is a resolution which would appoint David Carney to be the interim city manager. He would be paid based on the rate that you just approved during your regular council meeting. It would be based on the annual salary range of $212,000 for the interim city manager candidate, and he would not be receiving benefits. So it's actually, you would be paying him less than you would be paying a permanent city manager position because you don't have to pay the benefits and the health and hers and all that. So you can see the resolution includes the information legally required. Also included in the resolution is his, um, his resume. Are there any questions? And I, I will point out, maybe, I, I will introduce David Carney, he's the, no, we're not introducing. Okay, we're not introducing. All right, very good.
After he's voted on.
Okay, I shall open it up now to any public comment, anybody would like to give a comment, please step forward and state your name.
I'd like to entertain discussion, I already mentioned the topic. Why don't you just have the eight department heads report directly to you? Why do you need a, a city manager? Or an interim city manager? The salary ranges, I agree with the lower salary range because I think cities generally pay their city managers too much. It's, it's an industry problem, too much in general. And, you know, and you add 50% for benefits and stuff like that, it's, America has exported most of their, their industry away, and I think they would export their city government to China as well. But, but it just can't be done because we're, we're paying more and more for our services for less and less. And it might make sense if you, don't hire an interim city manager, don't hire a city manager. I'd like to hear discussion on how you could run the city just having the eight department heads report to you. Try that on for an idea.
Is there anyone else that can come up and speak? Now, see, seeing none, I shall now close the public comment, and we're opening up for discussion. Who would like to go first? Okay, well, that's what, that's what open the discussion for.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's have a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
No.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No, it passes three two. We have a new interim city manager. Okay, and at this time, I would like to close our special meeting. Introducing, oh, okay, they don't do it at the end, but that's okay. And introduce him now, please come forward.
So at, at this time, I'd like to call David Carney forward. This is our new interim city manager. His first day of work will be tomorrow morning, and he can be here bright and early.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is indeed an honor to have been selected as your interim city manager, and I'm very grateful to the city council for the opportunity. I cannot wait to get started. I look forward to assisting the city with all of these issues you've been addressing this evening. There's just a myriad of things that are going to need to be moved into high gear, especially as we work toward the new fiscal year, July 1st, and getting a balanced budget in front of you for your consideration. I think continuing to safeguard the city's fiscal health is obviously going to be one of our top priorities. In the local government literature, we talk about permanent whitewater, and what that means to us practitioners is that the only constant we face these days is change. And in practical terms, we really are forced to look at all alternatives in service provision. We just have to see what's out there and stay really focused on, on the, on the priorities. I bring to this assignment a, a spirit of optimism and an approach of appreciative inquiry, which is a, a way of saying we, we engage with our stakeholders and we actively listen to them as we're about the people's important business. For me, that work will start tonight. The chief of police has graciously agreed to introduce me around in the police station, and I'm going to be on a ride along. Fire chief and I have an appointment to be at fire station two at shift change tomorrow morning, so I can meet the crew going off and the crew going on, because we're in the people business, and we're providing these important services with, with the people that are on our payroll, and we need to make sure that we understand what their needs are, be it equipment, or manpower, or staffing, or response times. Once again, I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and I look forward to, to being here. Thank you very much.
So that, that adjourns our regular, or our special council meeting?
Yes, it does. I shall reconvene our regular council meeting at 8:27, and our next item is item number 10. It's a letter of opposition for a Senate bill SB 50. Who shall give that report?
Mr. Mayor, that would be me. So this item was requested to be agendized by Mayor Johnson. The SB 50 is existing law known as the density bonus law, requires when an applicant proposes a housing development within the jurisdiction of a local government, that the city, county, or city and county provide the developer with a density bonus and other incentives or concessions for the production of lower income housing units, or for the donation of land within the development, if the developer, among other things, agrees to construct a specified percentage of units for very low, low, or moderate income households or qualifying residents. The bill would require a city, county, or city and county to grant upon request an equitable community's incentive when a development proponent seeks and agrees to construct a residential development as defined that satisfies specified criteria, including, among other things, that the residential development is either a job-rich housing project or a transit-rich housing project, as those terms are defined. The site does not contain or has not contained housing occupied by tenants or accommodations withdrawn from rent or lease in accordance with specified law within specified time periods, and the residential development complies with specified additional requirements under existing law. So the bill would require that a residential development eligible for an equitable community's incentive receive waivers for maximum controls on density and minimum controls on parking requirements. And so basically, the League of California Cities has asked cities to send a letter, and they're opposing this because they're looking for it to be amended in order to approve it. It, it takes away some of the local controls, it allows developers to override state-approved housing plans, and so the League of California Cities, along with other cities, are saying that, yes, while we believe that there needs to be affordable housing, and housing is a shortage, as is the homeless crisis, they have concerns on approving the bill as stated. Having said that, I just pulled up a Twitter feed, and a couple hours ago, this item did pass the Senate Housing Committee just tonight on a nine to one vote. So if the council decides to send a letter of opposition or a letter of support, if it chooses, the city staff can definitely do that, we would be sending it to the League of California Cities as well as our lobbyists in legislature.
Do I have any comments from the council? If not, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this and have us send a letter of
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passes five zero.
Next item is item number 11. We have a report, please.
That will be me.
Aye.
So this is the city's first potential to have a West Covina Film Festival for students. Students will hold the spotlight at the First Annual West Covina Film Festival, which is a free event for everyone. Short film submissions under six minutes each will be accepted by junior high and high school students who attend any school in the city of West Covina. The top 20 films will be showcased at the West Covina Film Festival, and there will be prizes for all five film, five film categories, with a grand prize going to the special category, What I Love About West Covina. So Youth Film Productions is working with Covina and West Covina Unified School District to allow students to film on school grounds. So the entries are open at this time. The city staff is looking for council consensus on co-hosting the event in conjunction with Youth Film Productions. They have selected a date of Thursday, July 25th, which does not conflict with other city events, movies in the park, and, or movies under the stars, and the concerts in the park. And so we don't find any objection to working with this organization, we think it's a great opportunity, and so we're asking for approval from the council to hold the event at the civic center.
Any comment? If not, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, well, okay. We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passes five zero.
Next item is item number 12, evaluation of available city service online and after-hours. You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the February 5th, 2018 city council meeting, Councilman Dario Castellanos requested city council consideration of having staff survey other cities to learn what services they provide after-hours on weekends or when city hall is closed. Further, further direction was given by the council to have staff seek input from the community on what services they would like to see provided after-hours or during holiday closures. So the, to accommodate citizen requests for additional hours of customer service, in January 2019, the Public Services Department relocated its public counter to the Cameron Community Center. Cameron is open and has extended hours more than any other public counter. Operating hours include Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Saturday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So having the department's public counter encourages more customer service via phone or in person related to any city maintenance issues, as well as parks and recreation programs. We have services that are available online, live streaming of city meetings, a feature to report issues in the community such as graffiti, code violations, tree-related requests, traffic signals, shopping cart retrieval, et cetera, submitting business licenses and related permits, including payment processing, filing police reports, dispute and paying for citations and filing complaints, applying and paying for fire and police false alarm permits, registering and paying for parks and recreation classes and programs, submitting public information requests, ability to search city documents. Community development forums are available online for permits, planning, building, engineering, et cetera. People can also do vendor registration, search for open bids and RFPs via Planet Bids, which is connected to our website, apply for jobs, and submitting applications, and requesting the Military Blue Star Program posters. The online services that are expected to be, be available in the next few months, with our new software being implemented, is that community development and fire permit application processing will be available, community development and fire plan check submittals, scheduling inspections related to permits and plan checks, there are permit payment processing will be available, in addition to the booking of city facilities for facilities such as community center rentals, sports field, and other events that are needed for meetings and special events. So staff has surveyed the surrounding cities to compare services provided online after hours and days and hours of operation for city hall, and the details of the survey are included in your attachment. And we are in the, we are in the process currently of gathering information on what the residents and businesses want via the online survey. That online survey is up and operating. To date, we have actually received 18 surveys. So far out of those 18 surveys, 39% of the people visit city hall between 7:30 and 11 o'clock in the morning. 50% of the people are split on whether or not they would want to come in person or use online services. 61% of the respondents do not want city hall open on Fridays. Services that they would like to see online include paying traffic tickets, homeless services, which I'm not really quite sure what the homeless services are referring to, but we do have homeless resources and information on our website currently, access to the library, online passport services, 24-hour services available. to the library, online passport services, twenty-four hour services available, more recreation activities, city clerk services, a live agent customer service. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's that you can chat with an online rep when you're there to get service. PD updates. And forty percent want electronic plan checks. Fifty-three percent of the respondents would like to apply for permits and do online inspection scheduling. Sixty-seven percent of the people would like to book facilities, and seventy-three percent would like to do their passports online. Unfortunately, we cannot do online passports as the State Department does not allow that, but the other items are definitely doable. And as I noted in the staff report, we are looking to do many of the permits and online bookings moving forward with a new module that we have. And that concludes my report.
Any comments?
How many people were surveyed, and where did you start, where did you get the survey from?
Sure, so the survey is still live. So right now, I'm just providing you the online survey results as we've received them. So we've had them up a week, and the survey can be found on our website, westcovina.org. Surveys can also be found in person, and if they aren't printed, because we've ran out at our public counters, you can just ask any staff member, and we can print directly from our website. And you can turn it in to any public counter. We'll be collecting them and providing the full results. I believe the survey goes through the middle of April, and let's see here. Going to go through every bounder. I believe it's April eighteenth, if I correct, April nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Thank you for this information. I was wondering if we could look at, since we have the counter for public services at Cameron, if we could expand it to maybe include some of the permitting and plan approvals, because that may be an alternate to having to open city hall completely to extend the hours. So just the possibility of that. And then I follow the city on Facebook and Instagram, and I haven't seen anything on our social media about the survey. So can, if we've already done it, great, but if not, please blast it through social media so people know it's available.
Thank you. We should be doing that, yeah. That was supposed to go out, it was scheduled, it was a scheduled post, so I'll follow up, but definitely will be promoting it. Thank you.
Any more comments? If not, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, passes five zero. At this time, do we have any AB twelve thirty-four, so any of the council members to report? Okay, seeing none? Okay, no, we have, we have council comment. I would like to make a comment. You know, our last council meeting, I made a comment that I thought the RFP for a thirty-day RFP was a sham. At this time, I've been asked by a lot of residents what I meant by it. What I meant by it, I felt a thirty-day RFP was a sham because a sham I didn't feel was long enough for someone that wants to bring a new proposal in, that by the time it gets back to them, sends it back and back and back and forth, you're way past the thirty days. I would have voted for a ninety-day RFP. I do believe that this council all want a good project up there, and I all, I believe they felt in their hearts that it was the right thing to do. I just disagreed with them. So I don't think there was anything misdeeds done by the former, the other four council members. I just felt I would have preferred more of a ninety-day, make it look more transparent. And that's what I have to say, and we'll want to move forward. Is there any other comments? If not, I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Okay, we're done. At eight forty.